I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Shall we rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have no public comments. We will move straight into the Lee County vision. It's on, okay. I thought it's... That will be fine. The Lee County schools will teach each student the social and academic skills needed to become a responsible, productive citizen. Policy twenty-one twenty, Code of Ethics for school board members. The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflict of interest and appearance of conflict of interest as we handle the work of the board. Avoid the solicitation or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation of or falsification of facts. And avoid making confidential information public. At this time, I will, uh, we have some changes to our agenda. At this time, I will ask for a motion to amend the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to include the calendar change that you speak of, and that will be placed under New Business as item number two.
Second.
The, uh, the motion has been seconded. If we have no other opposition to that agenda, I will ask for people in favor of the amendment to, uh, everyone that's in favor should say yea. Everyone in favor?
Yea.
All opposed? No nay. So at this time, the amendment carries. So the next thing we'll look at is the approval of the minutes of twelve, thirteen, twenty, thirteen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of December thirteenth, twenty sixteen.
I'll second that motion.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any other counter motion to that? If there is no counter motion, everybody in favor, let's say yes.
Yes.
Okay. All opposed? No opposition to the motion. The motion carries. The next thing, it's on our agenda, is the minutes is approved. The next thing is the chairman's report. Because of the holidays and everything, I want to welcome everybody back from all the long holidays. And it looks like the holiday is not enough. We even have a snow day. So it's very good that we have a long vacation. So, but I know that the kids are ready to come back to school and the teachers are ready to come back to school. So at this time, the, in my chairman's report, all that I have was to announce that we have the SAGA meeting on the second of February. So all board members, if you have not signed up to go, we have a table already for you at the SAGA meeting. So you are all invited. Just let Susan know and you'll be registered. We already have a table. And the next one is, uh, that I want to talk about is our, the North Carolina School Board Association meeting, is it on Wednesday or Friday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday. We want to invite, uh, what to, uh, I want to tell the board, uh, other board members who are still interested in going that they can still register with Susan so that they can go to that meeting. That's all the report I have at this time. Uh, the next thing will be the superintendent's report.
I have three things, Mr. Chair. First, um, we are, after two, two days working with the weather, we plan to be in school tomorrow in regular schedule and time. So we will, we will, of course, continue to monitor things as we go through the evening and early morning, but that's our plan for right now, for tomorrow. Also, last time, I did discuss bringing together, bringing to you some ideas about a strategic planning process. I would like to take one moment, Mr. Chair and other members of the board. I would actually like to gather some feedback from some of our teachers and principals for that. And I think one of the places I would like to start with that is with our CNI committees and to reach out to them at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. If it's okay with you, Ms. Livingston, and seek some of their feedback on the process a little bit, because I want to make sure we have an all encompassing process. We can get people's feedback, both internally and externally. And I'd like to start with CNI committee to ask for that, if you don't have an issue with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
The other thing is the accountability update since we met last time. We really haven't had, with school getting out for the holidays and then coming back and having such a short session before we ran into some more vacation time because of the weather, we're waiting, we're waiting for some of those, some of that data to come back once we get a little bit more time back in school. We have already moved our first semester exams, actually because of the weather. Originally, we were supposed to start this Friday on January thirteenth, and we've moved that to January seventeenth through the end of that week.
I'm sure students appreciate not being tested on Friday the thirteenth.
I'm sure they do. Maybe that's just a good thing overall anyway. So, but that will, that change has already been made. We communicate that with our staff, staffs at the high school and also with our other folks that need to know that. And that information is also being put out there for parents and students as well. So hopefully, we will have that all out tomorrow. We were going to recognize someone with extra effort award, but because of the weather and everything, we decided to just sort of put that on hold for a month, keep everybody at bay. And then we'll be talking a little bit more, two calendar issues that'll be coming up in New Business. One for the calendar for seventeen eighteen, that we'll be talking about in a little bit. And then a potential makeup day that will be discussed for the second item that was added to the agenda tonight.
Dr. Bryant, you said internal and external, talking to, about the strategic plan. Internal, obviously, being the CNI committee. What's your, what's your plan for the external?
That's actually what I'm going to get their feedback on. I'm going to talk to them to start with, to make sure that we do it both internally and externally. And I want to hear their ideas first so we can put that framework together and then seek community input as well, because that's critically important to what we're doing. Really, I'm, right now, I'm really talking about process and getting feedback on that.
Something similar to what you did in the transition planning, you know, in visiting the individual schools. I thought that was really good when you came on as superintendent, something similar for public feedback, as we've seen a kind of a shift of information sharing out in the public. I think that would be fantastic.
Right. Thank you. And of course, every, every, every board member here will also have a part of that process as well, once we move it through our committee and get input from all the various stakeholders.
Another thing I forgot to say, you know?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you for your school cancellation on Tuesday. I know it's a call that aggravates folks, but err on the side of caution every time. Thank you.
I agree with that. Thank you. I forgot to say, at this, during the chairman's report, I planned to have a retreat for the board sometime in March, Retreat and Workshop, March or April. I'm still at the talking stage right now, so we'll have a board retreat at the, at the place where we will decide, probably at the central office.
Retreat across the street.
Retreat across the street.
Understood.
So. At this time, we want to hear reports from the committees. Dr. Livingston?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The curriculum and instructions did not meet over the Christmas holiday, but will meet tomorrow, which is Wednesday, January eleventh, twenty seventeen, at three thirty. The location will be San Lee Middle School. And then we will have our report after that. Thank you so much. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Livingston. Facility and Technology, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Facilities and Technology Committee met on December the nineteenth. We had several items on our agenda, the first of which was a request from American South to purchase some additional land that now is adjacent to Bullock Elementary School. It was a consensus of the committee to table that American South purchase until the next meeting, which will be on January the twenty-fourth. We also considered and approved the two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-two capital improvement project. We are required to present each year to the county commissioners all projects in excess of five hundred thousand dollars that we anticipate for the next five years. This, the CIP is before you. The committee approved it, and it will appear on the consent agenda. We also approved Deep River Elementary School boiler replacement. It was a consensus of the committee to award the Deep River Elementary School boiler replacement bid to systems contractor in the amount of ninety-seven thousand four hundred dollars. The funding source for this is from our capital outlay budget, and the item will be placed on the two thousand, our January twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen Board of Education Agenda, under the Consent Agenda. That concluded our meeting, and our next meeting will be on February the twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Any question? If we have no question, the next thing will be finance.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee has not met since our last board meeting on December thirteenth. Our next meeting will be on January the twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. And that concludes the finance report.
Thank you. We'll go to policy, Ms. Bowen.
Mr. Chair, the Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting. However, we have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, January nineteenth, five o'clock.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports. At this time, we want to look at the consent agenda. I guess we've all looked at the contribution, the donation, and fundraisers in your minutes that you already have. The capital improvement, we're talking a little bit about it.
Capital Improvement Plan, five-year plan that we, well, it's the plan we present to the county, sort of an outline of needs we see for things that are over five hundred thousand dollars. And we really try to plan that out and give the counties some advanced planning. It doesn't obligate anyone to anything, but it is, it is a plan and sort of illustrates the needs we have as a school district. And it comes through committee.
I just want you to elaborate on it for the, for the public to know. That's it. At this time, we'll go to the unfinished business.
We have to vote on the consent agenda.
We need a motion on it.
Sorry, we have to go forward today. I was moving so quickly. Let's vote on the consent agenda. I need...
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All is in favor. Carries, the motion carries. At this time, we will go to the unfinished business.
If I may, Mr. Chair, we'll, we'll, is it okay if we go to New Business?
Yes.
And we'll, we'll, we'll look at the two thousand seventeen, eighteen traditional year-round calendar, LEC calendars. I'd like to ask Mr. Rob Dietrich and Sharon Spence, come forward, please. The calendars for this, we put together a committee of teachers, administrators, staff, parents, and they'll give you a little bit of an overview of how many people were involved in putting this calendar together. And then some of the limitations we have as placed on us by the state, and then their recommendation for the calendar for two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Mr. Dietrich?
Members of the board, thank you very much for having us today. I would first, every year I stand up and do this, I first want to thank the committee members that are on the Calendar Committee. As Dr. Bryant alluded to, the Calendar Committee consists of parents, teachers, administrators, community members. It is just a great place to have everyone involved in education come together to determine what the school calendar will look like. The school calendar does have some limitations to it based on the school calendar bill that was passed. I can go into more detail about that if you have any questions. What I can tell you comfortably is that this calendar meets all of those obligations. It is a very tight calendar based on those, with a start date of August twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, and an ending date of June seventh, two thousand eighteen. That is all per the session law that we must follow. With that, this calendar is very similar to this current school year's calendar. So therefore, the committee did not have very much to discuss this year. We did discuss some workday options. Other than that, this is the calendar that was presented and approved by that committee. If you have any questions, please let me know now. And if not, we would request that you approve these calendars for the traditional year, the Early College, which mirrors the Community College, and for the year-round school of Tramway Leagues.
Can I assume, I'm sorry, can I assume this calendar is run on hours, not days, as we have in the past?
Correct. It is run on hours and not days.
And just for everybody, so everybody knows, the state requirement for that is one hundred eighty-five days or a thousand twenty-five hours.
And we try to pad some hours in the calendar so that in the event that we have some weather or some issues that like we have recently had, that those hours are covered. So we can miss a day or two, and it doesn't hurt us per se, because we've met the hour requirement. It's just a better way, I think, to do business, to make sure we protect ourselves and not running on the thin line with the hours.
Would one of you mind for the, for the board, just letting me know how many members of the committee there were?
You know, there were about, well, enough to fill these numbers, about thirty members, thirty, forty members. And it really is, it is excellent discussion. Parents speak up, the principals speak up, the teachers speak up. There's a lot of good discussion, where someone asks a question, we spend about ten, fifteen minutes usually on each question, with it going around the room and really trying to figure out if the, if any changes can be made at all. It is really a fun thing to co-chair with Miss Spence.
And the teacher representatives are asked to bring suggestions to our first meeting that they might have from their staff, and then to take the proposed draft calendar back to their staff and get feedback on that. So it's a continuous process of review and input.
I wanted to ask a question if I, if I can. I was recently approached about this question. I really didn't have a really good answer, and I don't want to blindside anyone. And that was the early release days. The parent was very frustrated with early release days and said that those are wasted school days. Can you give some sort of response that we can give as to the purpose, the value of an early release day, other than we bring the kids in, feed them, and send them home?
Under the current calendar, the biggest issue is there are not a lot of staff development days or times for parent-teacher conferences, because when we were under the old calendar, where you start at school in early August, went to late May, early June, there were a little more room for days in the middle for us to play with. And with the calendar being compressed the way it is, we try to offer time for the schools to either finish grading and meet with parents or have staff development during that half-day window.
That's exactly the answer I gave, is that it makes for easy professional development days.
And that's really what it does. We just, one of the most important functions that a teacher does is grades, and we just need to make sure they're accurate before they go into the final process.
For reference, when does the high school starting end in January?
Say again?
In January. When does the high school semester start and end, which always seems to be an issue lining up?
The, the high school semester ends next year, January nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. And the second semester will begin January twenty-third of two thousand eighteen. And ideally, I would love to see a calendar one day that starts back in early August and kids are done by, by Christmas break. And then what that would allow is for them to fit more of the college schedule, not just for exams, but also for students who earlier graduate. It just gives them an opportunity to go start their freshman year wherever they desire mid-year.
I believe, I believe I'm correct in saying that in one of the last legislative sessions in December...
On the special, that one-day session, there was a bill in the Senate, but it didn't make, it didn't make it past the Senate to change that.
And Ms. Spence will have to check me, and she and I have talked about this a lot, but I think something has gone to try to correct this bill ever since this bill was created. It just never makes it out of the House or the Senate. It just loses its legs. So if you were having conversation with someone, it would be a great thing if they would revert this calendar back to what it was, where we could go to school in early August.
And just, just for everybody's, the bill we're discussing that was introduced in December was, I believe, in alignment with the Community College calendar.
Yes, it was in alignment with the Community College calendar. Senator Bearfoot is pushing the career coaches, and one of the things that we've told him in the past is to line up and support career coaches, you've got to put the two calendars on the same date. So it doesn't make sense. I mean, from my past occupation, trying to tell a student, well, your class ends this day, in two weeks, you've got to do this, just like tomorrow, we'll have students who have to miss class here to attend their first day of class at a community college. And if they don't contend their first day at a community college, they're not technically counted there and can take it.
Well, and if you follow even on that, what I don't want to do for a kid who's hungry for education is if they graduate in January and graduate early, and then they can't go to school till June.
They have to stop that.
I don't want to encourage a young graduate out of high school, take a couple months off and then go back to school. If you've got that yearning for it, I'd love to see him just get right back into school.
Because they can't start a sixteen-week course there. They may as well start a twelve-week or eight-week course, because they have to wait on the official graduation transcript to see if they're graduating.
So all of that being said, if you know of anyone that might have the ability to help us return the calendar bill to where it should be for what's best for kids, please let them know.
That's not even going on, what it'd be good for test scores and not having to worry about studying every Christmas break and different things either.
Correct. And when you look at our current situation, you're looking at students who have been back very little, now have another two days, are going to have three review days before they hit exams coming off of a holiday weekend. It just doesn't, doesn't sit best for those things that Mr. Keller was talking about.
And it's not even easy to study during the holidays. When you come back in January, after all the, all those stuff, time enjoying with the family, it's not easy to study. It would be better to finish it in December.
Correct. So let's let folks know.
With that, I make a motion that we approve all three calendars at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition. The all in favor carry. The calendar is approved.
I now move that we...
Okay.
I now move that Lee County Board of Education going to...
That's second item on the, on the agenda.
One more item.
One more, New Business.
The, the second item is for this year's calendar to, to change. Currently, on January twenty-third, we have a required workday. And the motion we're considering is a change of that required workday to a student day, to a school day.
Full school day.
Full school day. That would allow us, because of the time that we've built in to the calendar with hours, we've lost some of that because of our snow days. And I'm anticipating that we might get some more winter weather as we go through here. I'd just like to have a little bit more cushion, and it seems like that being back in school on that day, considering all the days we've already been out so far in January, would be a really good consistency for education and learning to get folks back in school. And we'd like to offer that up sort of as a way to ensure that we can keep spring break where it is for people in the spring and help our learning process in the meantime in January.
So it's a good makeup day for the snow day? Yes?
Mark, before we go any further, I was having a little technical difficulty with the computer at the time. When we went over the approved agenda, I would like to make a motion that we make the CIP into a full agenda item, considering the list that I gave you on some talking points in reference to the CIP, because there was a lot of questions there that was brought to me by some of the citizens within the community discussing the amount that it costs for elementary school versus some bids that was given before. And I'll be more glad to go through that if we have time to listen.
You want to do that as a motion?
Yes, sir. And then argue the motion that this should be a full agenda item versus just an approval where we all signed off. Because someone may not have had, particularly the new members, may not have had a chance to go over some of the discussion that was given before previously in reference to the WB Wicker site for the elementary school. Some of the issues or concerns that I felt should be addressed was, do we have a detailed plan for the WB Wicker school renovations? And we need to see those details before we can vote to approve, because this is a large project for the capital improvements in the upcoming fiscal year. And do we get more than one estimate for the work, which I'm assuming that we probably did? The amount of twenty point seven million dollars seems outrageously high for an elementary school renovation. That's even higher than the original bid for the massive renovations that we did at Lee Senior High School just a few years back. And some of the citizens are still concerned, questioning the suitability of WB Wicker site for elementary school because of the high crime rate, safety issues, and things at that location. I don't know if all those concerns have been addressed. And I was wondering if we have looked into the possibility of having a contractor build an elementary school for us to lease. I brought several documentations here from different schools that I'm more than glad to share on Sandy Grove Middle School, different ones that they have used with sustainability. I'm sure that's a big issue for a lot of people in the area. But I wanted to know if we have even looked at the possibility of funding a plan in order to possibly lease instead of renovating school, considering some changes that may be coming with the new administration. We have no idea exactly what may happen with that when people have more choices for schools. And Hope County did this several years ago, and it saved them millions of dollars, because the facility was a lead-platinum certified building, and it generated more energy than it consumed each school year. It's a very modern, it's a very spacious school, it's just an option. And does Lee County even have the possibility of funding this plan in the coming fiscal year? It was my understanding, just from what I could research, that the Community College project, you know, they took, we were waiting to take our turn, and that the board took backseat to that, and they used the bond revenues for that for the two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen year. And the last thing is, according to the county CIP, which is available online at the county website, the soonest we can expect to get a new elementary school is around two thousand eighteen to nineteen. And it shows we only need fifteen point seventy-five million for a new school. So why should we renovate an older building in a bad location for five million dollars more instead of a new building? Those were my concerns.
Okay, so that's a comment.
Yes.
Because at this, when, what you were talking about, the site is already been decided and the site is already been chosen before this board, so, and the site is already been have a contract on and agreed on, so I don't know if we can go back and redo that, so...
Can these issues at least be addressed? As far as the questions go, I mean, these questions, a lot of these are questions. Like, did we look into the leasing? Did we get a second? And did we consider, did anyone note that the difference in the price? Twenty point seven million dollars? Twenty point seven million dollars didn't seem outrageous to anyone on this board? To renovate a school versus building one?
Actually, um, anybody, any other comment?
Go ahead, Andy.
No, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm not trying to interfere in this conversation, great conversation. Um, I, I believe there's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
If I'm correct in saying that.
Yeah.
You did make a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any second for the motion?
Would you, would you like to repeat your motion?
Yeah. My motion is that we take it off of the approval agenda and make it a full agenda item for further discussion for the newer board members.
And...
Any second?
And the citizens as well.
Okay, second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any counter-motion? Okay, since there is no counter-motion, we will go and, uh, vote on the, uh, on the motion on the floor.
Am I to understand the motion is to remove the CIP from the consent agenda and put it under the new business?
Yes.
Uh, as item number three?
Yes.
For additional discussion.
Just for clarification, you, you have already approved that.
We've already approved the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has already been approved, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I'm thinking.
That you would need a motion to change the, the, um, the, the approval of the consent agenda, but we've already approved the consent agenda.
And there was no motion then.
And, and that passed.
That passed.
That passed. So you're...
And I'll make a motion that we, we go back and relook at this situation, because, I mean, this is going really fast. I've never intended, I did not consent at that time, but I'm just one person. But... My, my motion was that we take this, you know, we, we...
To reconsider the vote of the consent agenda.
Yeah, reconsider it and then open it as a full item.
We've already, uh, approved the consent agenda.
We already, uh, approved the, uh, consent agenda, but now that we're trying to entertain the motion, and the motion has been seconded, what we, uh, have to do is to vote the, uh, uh, motion up and down. All in favor of that motion that we just, uh, have from, uh, board member, uh, board member, uh, Womack?
The motion that we reconsider the CIP?
Yeah, the motion that we, uh, we move it and reconsider it and make it a agenda on itself, uh, a number three on itself. We have to, uh, vote on it. All in favor of the, uh, of the motion? Can we just open our hand? Okay. Three? All opposed to the motion? Oppose, carry. So the, uh, the motion is, uh, is not approved at this time.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the Lee County Board of Ed- Education approve the revised two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen traditional calendar that will alter January twenty-third, two thousand seventeen from a required teacher workday to convert that into a standard student school day.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If there are no discussion on the, uh, uh, calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? There is no opposition, the motion carry. At this time, we will, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Kelly to give us a motion to go to closed session.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, and not public record under Norcalon General Statute, section one forty-three, three eighteen A dot one eleven.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No opposition, we go into closed session. I just go back of the closed session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the human resources report.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is, um, uh, made and, uh, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? There is no opposition to the motion. All in favor, carry, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a new business.
That is it.
That's it, okay? We need a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn, second.
The motion carries. Done. Have a good night.